Good morning, everyone. Welcome, and we will call the meeting to order, and I will ask for real call, please.
Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Bowe.
Here.
Schalki.
Here.
Dambrough.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Chairman Stoudamire.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
With that, we'll ask Commissioner Schalki to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, Maker of all there is, we praise you and thank you for that we can come before you. We thank you for your many blessings on Midland County and all who live and work in this area. Thank you for the safety we enjoy and many freedoms available to us. Thank you for the opportunity we have to recognize employees of our Midland County government who receive appreciation awards today. Thank you also for the employees and the committee who have taken time to recognize their fellow employees for the extra effort, diligence, and kindness that they have demonstrated. We appreciate all these employees. Lord, thank you for our visitors who come to these meetings and practice interest in our local government. Lord, help our residents who can vote on the Midland Public School bond proposal to remember about this critical decision, to have wisdom, and to vote today. May you also continue to prosper the businesses in this county, oh God, and their many employees. Help them all. We ask all these things in your precious name, oh Lord. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it expands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of April 22nd. You need a motion and support to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
Support. Thank you. Objection, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Motion is passed. Acceptance of claims and accounts for the week of March 17th, 24th, 31st, and April 7th.
General bank claims approved in the amount of $646,365.24. The total general fund expenditures $170,790.53. For the weeks of 3/24 through 3/28, general bank claims approved in the amount of $1,403,146.10. The total general fund expenditures $133,779.58. General bank claims for the weeks of 3/31 through 4/4, $375,563.77. The total general fund expenditures $172,213.62. General bank claims for the week of 4/7 through 4/11, $4,166,958.9. The total general fund expenditures $134,831.86.
Thank you. With that, I accept a motion and need support. I move we pay the bills. Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Bills are been paid. We have today a special program, as mentioned, and employee appreciation awards, and we will ask Mr. Alexander and Jennifer Anaway and Marissa Bolton and the others to come forward for presentation.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Okay. Here at Midland County, we believe our people are our greatest asset. To celebrate the dedication, hard work, and positive spirit that each of you bring to the workplace, we're excited to introduce our spring employee appreciation awards. These awards are designed to recognize outstanding contributions, promote a culture of recognition, and celebrate the individuals who go above and beyond to make a difference. Whether it's through leadership, teamwork, innovation, customer service, or public safety, we want to honor these who help shape our success. Thank you for joining us in honoring these remarkable individuals. We're going to take this opportunity to shine a light on their achievements and show our appreciation for the difference that we all make in our community. A special thanks to the Board of Commissioners for their support and to Jessica Gilkins, who is no longer on the committee but has been instrumental and is also filling in for Jennifer because she has a sick kiddo at home. Reminder, for those of you that receive awards, stay after. We're going to take a group photo, and there's also some Costco snacks back there, so please stay and eat them up. All right, starting off, we're going to start with Sergeant Trent Millard. Is he here today? Maybe? Nope? Oh, bummer. Okay. Well, Sergeant Millard has been employed with the Midland County Sheriff's Office for over 25 years. Prior to 2025, Sergeant Millard was responsible for the day-to-day operations of the Courthouse Security Division of the Sheriff's Office. Since taking office, Sheriff Hulzinger has reorganized some roles, including the elimination of the sergeant position at the courthouse, returning Sergeant Millard to his supervision duties within the Road Patrol Division, changing his schedule to shift work. Sergeant Millard accepted this move with complete professionalism, which reflects his character. Since his return to the Road Patrol, Sergeant Millard has volunteered to serve as the liaison of the newly-formed Victim Service Unit within the Sheriff's Office. This unit is comprised of several community volunteers who will serve as advocates to families who are coping with a death within their family. Serving as a liaison for this very important unit is no small task, as the service office provides will leave a lasting memory for the families we serve. Sergeant Millard has proven that he is a team player who cares about the Midland County Sheriff's Office and the community we serve. Thank you. Sheriff, do you want to come and check up? Thank you. Congratulations. Charles Levens from Pre-Trial Services. Charles is a ball of energy. This is his second career, but he has not slowed down a bit. He is always excited and willing to learn a new skill. He's very professional, resourceful, and is consistently in a positive mood around the office. He has stayed late, even coming back to the jail to assist with tethers for individuals who have bonded out. When receiving calls, he's engaging with the clients and always willing to find out information for them, even when it's outside of his job role. He's a great advocate for pre-trial participants when they're engaging in services and helps direct them to resources when they're struggling. He is able to maintain boundaries with clients and enforce bond conditions when needed to protect the individual and the community. When interacting with other agencies, he is respectful and appreciative of the coordination that exists and maintains the relationship with vital employees to continue this relationship. He is also thoughtful and appreciative of his coworkers in the 511 office in jail. It's very easy to see that he takes his work very seriously and understands the struggles of the clients and strives for the best outcome for everyone. Charles, thank you for being a part of one of Midland County's finest. Yay. Thanks, Charles. Brandon Shire from the Juvenile Justice Center. Brandon is a hard-working employee who frequently makes himself available to pick up extra shifts. He has routinely built and sustained rapport with the youth at the JJC. The youth look up to and admire Brandon for how he lives his life and the resilience he has exhibited. Brandon consistently arrives to work with a positive attitude and strives to assist the youth in the facility to better themselves by being a positive mentor and motivator. Thank you, Brandon, for all you do for Midland County. Must be working. All right. Thanks. Deputies Francisco Hinere and Gage Spitnall. In the early mornings of February 2nd, an inmate suffered a medical emergency shortly after being processed into the Midland County Jail. Unbeknown to jail deputies, the inmate had ingested a controlled substance prior to coming to jail. During a routine security round, Deputy Hinere observed that the inmate was profusely sweating and appeared to be quivering. Deputy Hinere and Deputy Spitnall assisted the individual out of the cell and assessed their vital signs. An ambulance was called, and the individual was transported to the emergency department. Shortly after arriving, the inmate had to be resuscitated and transferred to the ICU. The individual survived and was released from the hospital within a few days of the incident. Deputy's Hinere and Spitnall's observation skills, quick thinking, and response undoubtedly saved this individual's life that morning. Both deputies' actions are in keeping with the highest standards of the Midland County Sheriff's Office and deserve recognition. Thank you both. Good morning. Jessica Bishong. Do not let her title as a visitation clerk fool you. That might be her title, but she does so much more than that. She is responsible for safe and secure inmate visits, helps coordinate attorney and inmate consultations, assists in reviewing and archiving body cam footage, screens inmates' email and phone calls, manages programs, updates, repairs, and distributes inmate tablets. She coordinates clergy visits and fellowship within the jail and is quick to help her pre-trial coworkers, on top of any other special project that the command team creates. Nearly every day, she can be seen in the jail lobby assisting families that may struggle with technology involving the kiosk. Her interaction with the public is what you would expect from a professional. She always has a smile, a positive attitude, and an answer for concerned parties. Thank you, Jessica. Michelle Spaltz, Circuit Court. Michelle is a terrific person and coworker. She's always kind, helpful, positive, and a team player. Michelle has an extremely busy job and never makes coworkers feel like a burden for asking questions while learning their job. Michelle will stay late or come in on the weekends to make sure her work is done to the very best standards. She has an excellent ability to double-check details to ensure that the court runs as smoothly as possible. Thank you, Michelle, for being an incredible coworker.
Good morning. Deputy Benzing has over 25 years of service with the Midland County Sheriff's Office. He could have retired months ago, however, he chooses to stay and continue solving crimes for the citizens of the county. Recently, Detective Benzing has been in the finishing stages of a four-plus-year-long homicide case, which has involved thousands of pages and case files. His countless hours and dedication to the case show how much he has committed to solving the crime for the victim's family. Just recently, I should add, charges have been filed in the case, and the suspects are in jail as a result of Detective Benzing's steadfast commitment and hard work. Detective Benzing has also taken a new detective under his wing. Detective Benzing has added the added responsibility of training this new detective, as well as being a mentor to him. Detective Benzing goes above and beyond his role. Examples of this are countless hours that he works, he makes phone calls after hours, works through lunch often, and attends road patrol briefing well after his regular working hours. Detective Benzing's commitment to his role has resulted in hundreds of solved cases, including cold cases that previously went unsolved even before he became a detective. Even after his 25-plus years of service, he's often seen read the books about criminal investigations, and he is always trying to learn and improve his skills. Detective Benzing also teaches courses in criminal investigation at local high schools, colleges, and the Delta College Police Academy. Detective Benzing has a brilliant mind, and for all of these reasons is deserving recognition. Thank you, Detective Benzing, for your many years of commitment to the Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Midland County. Congratulations. On January 27th, 2025, Deputy Walser noticed that an inmate who had recently returned from court was not acting like himself. He notified the rest of his shift to be extra watchful of this inmate. Corporal Akins and Deputy Hureska also noticed the shift in the inmate's behavior and demeanor. Corporal Akins was assigned to the housing unit where the inmate was housed and took extra care to pay close attention to the inmate. When the inmate returned to his assigned cell, he managed to take a bed sheet and tie it around his bunk and began to hang himself. Corporal Akins found the inmate with the ligature tied around his neck and immediately called for backup. Deputies Walser, Hureska, and Martin responded to the housing unit to assist. Deputy Hureska and Corporal Akins lifted the inmate up to take pressure off his neck while Deputy Martin retrieved a pair of trauma shears. Deputy Walser used to cut the bed sheet from around the inmate's neck. Incidents like this are an example of what corrections deputies are expected to deal with, but that should not diminish the profound heroism these deputies displayed. If not for the proactive work of these deputies, this inmate would have been successful in taking his own life. Thank you for your quick thinking, teamwork, and compassion in this difficult situation. Deputy Schuler. Deputy Schuler's been an asset to a shift since the beginning of shift assignments this year. He's had the hard job of training new deputies nearly continuously since the beginning of the year. This is a difficult position, but fulfilling position, to be taken seriously and without complaint. Deputy Schuler has played an important role in ensuring that our new road patrol deputies are trained and competent while also sacrificing the freedom of working solo. Being a field training officer is a stressful job that puts them into a pseudo-supervisory position without the benefits of pay or title. Deputy Schuler consistently focuses on the needs and betterment of the office rather than what's easier and better for himself. He puts others before himself and is always trying to help wherever he can. After training deputies for months at a time, it would be easy for a deputy to want to take a break. However, in the very few days of this year, the Deputy Schuler worked without a trainee, he hit the road, and worked hard at being proactive. Thank you, Deputy Schuler, for your dedication and hard work.
Emily Bruison, Clerk 2, Health Department. Emily consistently goes above and beyond to support our children's special healthcare services clients. With implementation of our new electronic medical record system, she has quickly adapted and become a trusted go-to resource for all Patagonia CS-HCS-related questions. In addition to her usual responsibilities, Emily has taken on the kindergarten oral health assessment initiative this year. Her hard work, adaptability, and dedication to all of her programs deserve recognition. Thank you, Emily, for everything you do.
Annie Walter and Rebecca Carlson, RN's Health Department. We are proud to acknowledge Annie Walter and Rebecca Carlson for their outstanding work in the International Travel Clinic. Their dedication, flexibility, and consistent professionalism are vital to our operations. The high demand for preventative vaccines for travel, college requirements, or general wellness keeps them incredibly busy. Despite frequently having to skip lunch or stay late due to client needs, they continue to serve with patience and excellence. A recent client summed it up perfectly. This is the place to go for vaccines. Not only do they know their job, but they also do it well. I recommend Midland County to all my friends. Thank you, Annie and Rebecca, for your exceptional care and service.
Lori Wilkinson, Tabitha Spencer, Alice Flowers, Prosecuting Attorney's Office. During the recent absence of our office manager, Lori, Tabitha, and Alice demonstrated exceptional teamwork and leadership. Without hesitation, they divided the responsibilities among themselves while continuing to manage their regular workloads. With support from county colleagues, especially Ken DeGud and Finance, they kept the office running smoothly during a particularly busy period, without the need for additional temporary help. Time-sensitive responsibilities and high workloads didn't deter them. Their initiative, dedication, and selflessness ensured that vital community services continued uninterrupted. Midland County should be proud to have such committed and capable team members. Thank you, Lori, Tabitha, and Alice.
Good morning, everyone. Samantha Tasker, Prosecuting Attorney's Office. During a particularly busy time in January of this year, the prosecutor's office suddenly found themselves with two open support positions, which needed to be filled as soon as possible. Between vacations and sick time, the office had a number of people out and needed some help with reviewing new employee applications, setting up interviews, and coordinating the new hire process. While other staff were busy covering normal duties, Sam stepped up and handled a great deal with the additional tasks, all while handling her very busy victims' rights duties. As a result of her extraordinary efforts, the office was able to keep up with all of their regular work while shorthanded and quickly filled the open positions. Without Sam's great assistance, the prosecutor's office would have been unable to keep up with everything. Also, during a recent felony trial involving approximately 25 witnesses, and while the office was preparing for a case management software changeover, Sam did a tremendous job of balancing all the witness schedules and keeping everyone available to testify when needed. She did all of this while training the new victim advocate and assisting Mr. Amen at trial. Sam is greatly appreciated for her efforts above and beyond the call of duty.
Janelle Verhage, Circuit Court Clerks. Janelle is a great coworker in Circuit Court. She works hard and is always positive and level-headed. Janelle always has a smile to offer and a hand to lend when help is needed. Additionally, she'll do it all without complaining. When customers are angry or rude at the counter, she handles situations calmly and never reacts to their attitude. The Circuit Court Clerk's office would not be the same without her joyful demeanor and her willingness to help others. Janelle, congratulations.
Nate Miller and Chris Cancell of IT and GIS. Chris and Nate have been extremely helpful to the Midland County Internet Connectivity Committee with providing the internet upload and download speed data and communication mechanisms for all locations in Midland County. It was a significant challenge to transfer the public data provided by the Michigan High Speed Internet Office to the county's GIS system. By doing this, the progress towards the goal of providing 100% of county residents with availability of high-speed internet can be tracked and communicated. Chris and Nate have made excellent recommendations and delivered on ideas to improve the communications to all stakeholders on the overall progress and continuing challenges. After all, you manage what you measure, and their efforts have tremendously helped communicate this progress. Nate and Chris, thank you and congratulations.
Suzie Tidwell, District Court Probation. Suzie has been a probation officer at District Court for approximately nine years. She may not be a big fan of this public recognition, but the community should be aware of her effort and efficiency that she brings to the courthouse. Suzie approaches her responsibilities with professionalism and takes her role seriously, both on and off the job. She consistently volunteers for additional challenges and conducts extensive research to address issues that extend well beyond her required duties. Despite these extra tasks, she reliably meets deadlines and works independently with little need for supervision. In 2024, the District Court Probation Department frequently operated short-staffed. Throughout that time, Suzie stepped out without complaint, continuing to perform at an exceptional level. She also found time to help mentor a new probation officer by offering her experience and vast knowledge of the job. What stands out most about Suzie is her genuine care, as well as the time and attention she gives to individuals she supervises and to her colleagues. She's often heard going the extra mile to get someone assistance they need while treating them with kindness and compassion. She's a vital asset to the court, and she deserves recognition for her outstanding work and the way she represents Midland County. Thank you, Suzie.
Paige Hoffman, District Court Probation. Paige has served as a probation officer in District Court for approximately the past seven years. From day one, Paige has performed her duties with professionalism, precision, and exceptional level of organization. Paige brings a consistently positive attitude to her work and can always be counted on to take on additional assignments without hesitation. In 2024, there were significant challenges with the probation department being short-staffed for much of the year. Despite the added pressure, Paige rose to the occasion, supporting her team and never missing a beat. She also helped mentor the new probation officer. In a role where it would be easy to get burned out or have compassion fatigue, Paige continues to show resilient strength and an unwavering commitment to those she serves. Whether it's feedback from colleagues or those under her supervision, the message is always the same. Paige makes a real difference in people's lives. Paige, your dedication, impact, and excellence do not go unnoticed, and you represent exactly what a probation officer should be. Congratulations, and thank you for everything you do.
Jessica Fetterman works for the Mosquito Control Department. Jessica is an exceptional leader whose dedication to her department, coworkers, and the residents of the county is truly inspiring. As field supervisor, she has embraced significant changes in her role with enthusiasm, mastering drone technology for mosquito control, expanding her skills in GIS mapping, and transitioning from a seasonal to a year-round position with impressive initiative. Jessica consistently steps up to meet new challenges, taking on increased responsibilities in planning, leadership, and daily operations with grace and professionalism. Her go-to attitude is always, what can I do to help ensure success, a mindset that defines her leadership style. She's a mentor and role model to her team, earning deep respect and admiration from those she supervises, with one technician saying, Jessica's the best supervisor I've ever had. Her commitment to excellence ensures her crew is well-trained, well-equipped, and well-supported. We are proud to recognize Jessica for her outstanding service, her impact is deeply felt, and her leadership benefits the entire county. Gavin Doll, Juvenile Specialist. Gavin Doll is exceptional at his job. He shows up every day with dedication and consistently goes above and beyond. Gavin always gives 110%, no matter how the day is going. He's highly skilled in implementing behavior modification strategies, leading group sessions, and working one-on-one with youth to support their personal growth. Gavin handles crisis situations with professionalism, ensuring safety and maintaining order while upholding facility rules. His commitment and hard work make a lasting impact on everyone he serves. Thank you, Gavin. Jennifer Foskett. Jennifer is an exceptional registered nurse whose dedication to children and families in Midland County is truly inspiring. Through her work with the Children's Special Healthcare Services Program and as the lead prevention nurse, she provides critical case management and lead poisoning prevention services for children with chronic and complex medical needs. Jennifer goes above and beyond every day, helping families secure health insurance, pharmacy coverage, and essential resources so they can focus on caring for their children. Her compassion is evident in the many ways she steps in, arranging for wheelchair ramps, air conditioners for children with cystic fibrosis, and adaptive bikes for kids with neurological conditions. On top of her daily responsibilities, Jennifer chairs regional meetings for health departments and advocates at the state level, working tirelessly to improve the lives of children with special healthcare needs. Midland County is incredibly fortunate to have someone as compassionate, committed, and capable as Jennifer. Her impact on families and the community is immeasurable, and she is more than deserving of this special recognition. Thank you, Jennifer. Marissa Bolton has been the Community Corrections Manager for many years and is a key member of numerous boards across Midland, including the Community Corrections Advisory Board, PA 511, where she organizes quarterly meetings. She manages the PA 511 Grant Program from the Michigan Department of Corrections, overseeing budgeting, reporting, statistics, and coordinating services for Midland County. Marissa ensures funds are spent wisely, vendors are paid, and the program runs smoothly. She's the go-to person for addressing issues related to prisoner education, substance abuse, and mental health, and is widely known as "The Fixer" for solving complex problems. Marissa manages a variety of programs, including jail education, mental health services, electronic monitoring, and inpatient substance abuse admissions. She also coordinates transportation across the state for those in need of inpatient care. Marissa is highly respected by community corrections professionals statewide and is known for her compassion, always tackling challenges with a positive attitude and determination. Her motto, "We can always do better," reflects her commitment to continuous improvement. Her dedication brings great credit to her family, colleagues, and the citizens of Midland County. Thank you, Marissa. Jeff Kozak is a dedicated and hard-working leader who brings both professionalism and heart to his role at the sheriff's office. As a shift leader, he not only leads by example, but also plays a key role in training and mentoring new staff, helping to shape the next generation of officers with integrity and care. Jeff consistently goes above and beyond, often staying after hours without pay, simply to ensure his colleagues have the support they need. His selflessness, teamwork, and commitment to excellence make a lasting impact on everyone around him. For his outstanding leadership, dedication, and compassion, we're proud to recognize Jeff with this well-deserved award. Kenda is an outstanding team member whose dedication and support have made a lasting impact. She's gone above and beyond to assist with complex travel arrangements and has stepped in to provide help in areas once supported by Craig Maxwell, showing her versatility and commitment. Kenda is always willing to lend a hand, no matter the challenge, and does so with a positive and helpful attitude. Her reliability, kindness, and can-do spirit make her truly deserving of this recognition. We're grateful to have her on our team today, and we proudly honor her with this well-deserved award.
Bravo, Kenda.
Heather is a hands-on, compassionate leader whose dedication and work ethic set a powerful example every day. As a supervisor with an open-door policy, she leads with both heart and humility, always willing to step in, whether it's passing meds, assisting nurses, or simply lightening the load of those around her. In a fast-paced environment with constantly evolving needs, Heather remains calm, focused, and responsive. She juggles a steady stream of residents, staff, families, and doctors with incredible grace, all while ensuring that no task is ever beneath her. Her open-minded approach to healthcare and her genuine willingness to listen make her an invaluable advocate for both residents and staff. Heather's follow-through and commitment keep the home running smoothly, and her leadership leaves a lasting positive impact on everyone she works with. We're honored to recognize Heather for her outstanding service and unwavering dedication. That concludes our ceremony. We appreciate everyone for coming today. And for everyone who received awards, if you could join us in the lobby for a photo, we'd really appreciate it, and join us for snacks. I can make sure it gets to...
Real quick, thank you to everybody that was here and participated and received the awards. And the board of commissioners will go at recess for 15 minutes.
All right. The board will come back to order.
Yeah, you can talk with me.
All right, that was an awesome program. Moving on, we will invite public for public comment. Do we have any public comment today? Seeing none, move to standing committee reports and resolutions. Committee report number one.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of the Care Coordination Agreement with McLaren Health Plan for the provision and coordination of children's special health care services. This agreement commences on May 1st, 2025, and will renew automatically on an annual basis. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson Eric Dorian, Larry Scholkey, Administration Operations Committee.
Thank you, and we'll...
Mr. Chairman, the Administration and Operations Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 24-4-25.
Thank you. With that, we'll open up for public comment. Seeing none, we will close public comment in a commissioner discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Scholkey.
Yes.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder is absent. Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent motion carries.
Thank you. Committee report number two.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the Care Coordinating Agreement with Meridian Health Plan for the provision and coordination of children's special health services. The agreement commences on May 1st, 2025, and will renew automatically on an annual basis. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson Eric Dorian, Larry Scholkey, Administration Operations Committee.
Mr. Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Administration and Operations Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 25-4-25.
Thank you. With that, we'll open it for public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, any commissioner discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Mr. Scholkey.
Yes.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent motion carries.
Thank you. And committee report number three.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the amendment to the agreement with MGT of America Consulting, LLC, for preparation of grant documents relative to the title 4D Child Support Enforcement Grant. This amendment is effective April 1st, 2025, and updates the cost per time sheet from $1.40 to $2. Funding for this amendment is already available in the 2025 budget. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson Eric Dorian, Larry Scholkey, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Administration Operations Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 26-4-25.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, any commissioner discussion? Commissioner Bone?
I just wondered, what's the reason for the increase from $1.40 to $2? That's a pretty large increase.
It's the first increase they've had in 15 years.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
The total impact's only $300 or something.
No, it's small, but it's a great question. Principle.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Commissioner Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Scholkey.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent motion carries.
Thank you. Committee report number four.
Dated May 1st, 2025, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend attached proclamation declaring the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week in Midland County. The President and Congress have designated the first full week of May as a time to show appreciation to our nation's talented and dedicated public servants. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson Eric Dorian, Larry Scholkey, Administration Operations Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Administration Operations Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 27-4-25.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, any commissioner discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Mr. Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Scholkey.
Yes.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent motion carries.
Thank you. Committee report number five.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the attached resolution which supplements and amends the previously approved 2024 resolution outlining a plan for financing Four Lakes Special Assessment District and pledging full faith and credit of the County of Midland within constitutional and statutory limitations. Respectfully submitted, Mark Bone, Chairperson, Larry Scholkey, Todd Gambrell, Finance Committee.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 23-4-25, and Dave Kepler from the Four Lakes Task Force is here, so I wondered if you could... Sorry. If you could come forward and give us a little update.
Can we get a support really quick first, though, please?
Oh, sorry. Who needs support for the...
Or...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, happy to be here. And with me is Kayla, our Treasurer and Secretary, and Joe Colani of Clark Hill, who is the counsel for the Four Lakes Task Force, as well as the bond attorney in this matter. Thought we'd give a quick update. It's been a year, I think, since we've been here. And the last county meeting involving the subject was pretty large and elaborate, so I appreciate being here. And the Supreme Court denied Heron Cove's association of application to leave on April 11th. That was about a month earlier than we had requested, and having the court order expedited, Heron Cove agreed with the expedition, so that's helped us in terms of accelerating where we thought we would be. The two federal lossers have also been dismissed, so that has left us open to proceed with bond issuing and just in the financial plan, and we'll go over that, was to issue $80 million last year about this time, and now we're a year behind. This year, the winter tax bill will be the operations and maintenance assessments for what you approved last year for '25 through '29, and the capital assessment for $217 million that you also approved last year. Right now, all the dams are permitted, and construction is being remobilized in this month, and we would expect construction occurring in all the dams by June, or by the end of June, to work through. Our initial estimates right now, we still have a few more contracts to cover through, but we expect most of the dams to be complete, Seacord, Smallwood, and Sanford by into 2026. Smallwood and Sanford, probably spring, late spring, and Seacord, summer. Eatonville is probably fall of 2027, so we would expect to be substantially on all four dams by that time. The project, when we had to delay the project and suspend construction, we'd estimated about $10 to $20 million of expense increase over what we had estimated as a project cost, utilizing a portion of the contingency we had. Right now, the project, the estimates we've gotten so far is about $10 million over what we were planning. We haven't got all of Eatonville's numbers in because it was a little bigger project to address, but we'll be probably, we'll be under the $20 million estimate, and we're certainly under the $217 million total cost of the project that was approved. So we feel like, as we mentioned before, we had $34 million of contingency. We had improved that with the estimates that came in from Eatonville. We backtracked on that, but we're still ahead, I think, on the overall project improvement. The issue of the bonds will be, as we described in the financing plan, initially, we thought we could get U.S. Army Corps loan in the second part of the loan in 2026. That did not occur. We did not get approval for that. So it's going to be two bond issuances, one this year for $80 million, and one next summer, timing for the remainder of the project, which right now is, still has the estimate of $217,700,000, but hopefully, we can get that under with project performance and maybe some grants in there as well. This bond basically addresses two issues. One is, it's administrative and it's changed to the resolution that was passed by the board here in February of 2024. One is, to name the Four Lakes Assessment, bonds are being issued with '25, not '24, so the renaming of the bonds. The market's a little bit more volatile, and so we think the current planning range for interest rate is somewhere between 6% at the time last year, '24, we had 5%. And so that's one change is the rate to not exceed 6.6%, where before it was 6%. And that just gives us enough to make sure we don't have to reset if we go. We're, right now, the bond market would suggest we're going to be in that 5 to 6 range to work on. So those are the two main issues in those kind of projects, too, that we want to have summarized, and we can answer any questions. To the lake assessment itself, it's a 40-year assessment to pay. As I said, we'll be assessing the principal, the annual principal. So these are 40, this is a 40-year financing program, so finance over 40 years. We'll only be charging interest on the $80 million for the first year, and then add the interest as we go forward. From a communications point of view, we've had a couple, we've had a webinar in this since the meeting. We plan to have another one in July. We're not required to, but we're mailing out communications to everybody in the Special Assessment District that they have the right to prepay, so we're telling them early that if they pay by July, they won't, basically, what, July 30th? July 1st, if they pay by July 1st, they won't encumber any interest on their assessment. But they can pay anytime they want. We want to communicate that prepay. We won't have the final '25 assessment, understood, until we actually go out and finance and get the assessment. And so therefore, in July, we'll send out another first-class mailing and have a webinar that actually explains what the 2025 exact numbers will be for them. Again, not something we have to do, but given the adventure here that we've gone through, I think it's important to keep the community informed and the individual property owners informed. We also have an interactive map that is getting updated, and we've worked with the townships and drain commissioners and assessors and counties to make sure we're all lined up for the assessment, and we're pretty well lined up with the counties for the bond financing. So with that, open up for any questions or comments.
Any questions from the commissioners?
You summed it up very well.
Yeah, thank you. I do have one staging of the water coming back into the lakes once the dams are completed. What should the public or expect for water levels? How quickly?
Pardon? Say that again?
The level of the water to return, how long does it, is it estimated to take?
Oh, when the lakes come back, you're saying? If, so, the environmental regs are that you can't fill the water between October and April on the lake fill. And that's to deal with the habitat of hibernating animals like turtles and frogs and mussels and stuff. So if we do this right, we would expect that you'd see water in the lakes in the summer, in 2026, for the Smallwood and Sanford, and maybe for Seacord late in the year, and probably Eatonville. So we would expect water in Sanford. I don't know how big a season it's going to be, but that's the timing. So if we can get them up before the spring and able to bring them up in April, May, late April or May, then we'll have a good season. But I think substantially complete this year would suggest we'd, or complete next year would suggest we'd have some season that we can move it up for Sanford and Midland County, and the two northern dams would come up. Eatonville, it's just a bigger dam and project to move forward, and will take another year.
Thank you.
They do.
Bridget?
I think that what Jim was asking is, how long does it take to fill? So Sanford Lake from start to finish, how long would it take to get...
It depends. If it comes in spring, it's a matter of weeks. If you look at Seacord and Smallwood, they'd be up in a matter of weeks, and if you looked at Sanford, it'd be a month or so. If you go into middle of July and August, there's not as much water going through the river. Putting garden hoses in doesn't help, as people have suggested. So you're dependent on the river flow, and so in the summer, it's pretty low. And so you're basically trying to get these things done before the spring fill, and then they go out filled pretty quickly. It's tough to work through.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate all the support over the years, and hopefully, we get the project done in the next couple.
Appreciate the help, dear.
Thank you.
You're here.
All right. We will open up for public comment. Seeing none, any additional commissioner comments or discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Scholkey.
Yes.
Gambrell.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Stamos.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent motion carries.
All right. Next, we will move to commissioner comments, and we will start with Commissioner Bone.
Well, I would say, everybody get out and vote today, whether it's a yes or no, please vote. And a reminder, today is the Give Local Day, where anything you donate to your favorite charity is matched, I believe, through the Community Foundation. Isn't that correct, Bridget? Is that who's right matched?
Well, there are some, so that it's competitive, right? So there are some timeframes where if you donate during a certain time, you get matching, and so it's, they make it competitive so that you pay attention during the day. But yeah, thank you for bringing it up. It's important.
Bang for your buck if you're going to give, today's the best day of the year for a local charity to get money.
Very cool. All right. Commissioner Scholkey.
Well, congratulations to all the employees who got, who were recognized today. It was incredibly impressive to see the great work that was being done and the passion, the interest, the excellence that people do. That was, that was awesome. I'm glad we can have that and do that. And echoing Commissioner Bone's comment to be sure that people, encourage people to vote for that bond proposal, to study the issues and make a wise decision.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gambrell.
Congratulations and thank you to all the employees who received recognition today. That's fantastic. The number of employees who were recognized by their fellow employees really shows that it's a great place to work. And thanks very much to Kayla, Joe, and Dave, not only for being here today, but for all the work you guys have done over the years to make this thing happen. Without you, it would not happen in the timeframe that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dorian.
To say thank you to the Appreciation Awards Committee, Jessica and Marissa. We know who does do all the work there.
All right. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. I, yeah, I just want to echo what the other commissioners said. I really love having... I really love having our Employee Appreciation Awards every year. I really like seeing, whether it be an emergency situation that people responded to, excellent, or just kind of the day-to-day that they are excelling. I'm really proud of the work that's done in Midland County. I was really excited to see, I didn't realize that my cousin now works for the county and got an award, so that is exciting. And yeah, I would also echo that it's really important if you are in the areas to go vote today, it's a big issue for our teammates. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will echo the congratulations to the awards that were received, but also to the committee that took all the time to put the work in to do that. And again, thank you, Dave, for all the work that you and your committees and teams and even some of those attorneys do. We appreciate it very much, and please get out and vote. With that, we will move to meeting schedules. Commissioner Bone.
Are we going through, what day are we going through?
I believe just the 13th.
Just the 13th? All I have before only going through the 13th is tomorrow I have the Midland Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting downtown at 8:30 a.m., and that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholkey.
We have the Midland County Parks and Rec meeting here at the County Services Building tomorrow, 7th at 6:00 p.m. On Monday, I'll be attending the NBA Legislative Conference at the Country Club. At 7:00 p.m., we have the Lee Township meeting at their Township Hall, and then you can be acknowledged, we have the executive meeting, of course, next week, the Board, and then there'll be some finance, or the different committees' meetings after that.
Commissioner? Yes, I should have announced finance at 1:30, so that is correct. Sorry, I missed that.
I'll be attending the Greendale Township meeting that evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Gambrell?
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dorian?
None to announce, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Next Monday, the 12th, at 7:00 p.m., I have City Council, and then the following day, on the 13th, we will have Human Services Committee at 11:00 a.m. And then, the following Monday, May 19th, we will also have City Council at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. And with that, I have the Midland Business Alliance legislative thing on Monday. I think it's only one between now and then. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. With that, the meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. To meet in an executive committee of the whole session for the committees, and committees to resume their duties.
Thank you.